Progress.
Good evening. I would like to call the order. The ACSD Board Meeting for October the 13th. The current time is 6:30. At this time, our usual tradition is to do introductions. So let's start with Jason.
Steve Cash.
Jess Venable-Novak.
Laura Hartman.
Jamie McCollum.
Mary Heather Noble.
Steve Orzek.
Tricia Allen.
Wendy Baker.
Barbara Wilson.
Suzanne Buck.
Nellie Colazo.
Courtney Kran.
Akarreti, Director of Finance and Marketing.
And is there anyone on Zoom?
Ellen from.
And Ellen?
Yep, Ellen Wieland-Wiest.
Excellent. Next, I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda as warned.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of approving the agenda as warned, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the agenda has been approved. Up next is our first public comment period. I don't see any public in the room. Is there any public online? If you are interested in making a public comment, please raise your Zoom hand. Okay, seeing no hands raised, we'll continue on. If I could have a recommendation to approve the minutes of September 22nd? A motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. In a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor of approving the minutes of September 22nd, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. I'd like to turn it over now to Jason for the approval of the ACSD bills.
In addition to the two warrants that are in the minutes, we have two additional warrants that were reviewed today. We had a payroll warrant dated October 3rd in the amount of $1,596,031.9. But a general warrant dated October 10th in the amount of $1,289,580.23. Suzanne and I reviewed them today and there were no outstanding issues or questions.
Can I have a motion to approve the bills?
I'll move to approve the bill.
In a second? Any discussion, questions? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor of approving the ACSD bills as reported, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The bills have been approved. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our Superintendent, Dr. Baker, for your part of the agenda.
Okay. So, beginning with personnel appointments and resignations, there are just a couple here there for you. One of note is Tammy Swan, who's joined us as a Medicaid clerk. You might remember that Sherri Bristol was the Medicaid clerk and she's now taken over the work of the payroll coordinator. So, it's a luxury for us to have Sherri still here to be able to train Tammy, who has actually a background in medical billing, which is really helpful and she's starting off in great shape. So those are there for your approval.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I move to approve the appointment of Jennifer Armstrong for School Nutrition Manager 1.0. Shannon Jordan, Pair Professional 1.0, and Tammy Swan, Medicaid Clerk 1.0.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion, questions? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor of approving the slate of appointments as warned, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Laura and Steve, thank you.
So we have a proposal around the expenditures for the McJolton Fund and I think Matt is going to walk you through that.
That would be great, thank you.
So, if you all recall, each spring the board is asked to authorize the distribution of funds for the McJolton Fund, which is an endowment that serves the elementary students of Mary Hogan. Or, as the language reads, "the elementary school in Middlebury." Once these funds have been granted, Principal Jen Cravitz is asked to prepare an expense budget that details the investments. The purpose of this budget summary is to provide the board with programmatic feedback and assurances that the appropriated funds are being used in accordance with the terms of the quest. COVID kind of interrupted some of the distribution and budgeting strategy around McJolton and so we've been trying to realign over the last couple of distribution years in order to kind of make it a more logical cycle. What that's looked like is now taking a distribution in the spring, as we've done, which takes 4% of the previous 12-quarter average balance. And then in the fall, having Jen come up with a budget to show how those funds will be spent over the course of the school year. Some of the previous ones included taking the distribution in the spring in order to fund Keek at the end of the school year. And then there was this remaining budget that would get used in the fall and it became kind of disjointed. So we've got a better alignment now. Keek is also being paid for for all rising sixth graders out of the general fund. And so this budget that you can see here on the screen represents the plans to spend roughly $39,000 this year on the following investments. You can see here, just by some of the titles of the items, that they are largely student opportunities that are designed to enrich and enhance the curriculum at Mary Hogan. And those all line up with a lot of the expenses that McJolton has funded in the past.
Do we need to approve this? Because in the spring, we authorize funds?
I believe that the language reads that Jen is meant to come and present to the board and I don't think she was able to be here tonight to do that, so I'm doing it on her behalf to satisfy that requirement.
Okay.
She prepared this budget and then has it to present to you all to sort of close the loop, to say, "You gave this money in the spring. Here's the plan in the fall and this is going to now unfold this year."
Yeah, and that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure. Okay, any questions?
And I would send you Jen's way if you have deep programmatic questions because I'm not an expert on these things, but I know that they all look familiar and have been historically funded this way.
Mary Heather, did you look for this?
Well, I do, but it's not specific to these requests. More broad questions about what would happen under Act 73 and even, you know, I think the questions would be answered later on.
I can tell you that this McJolton Fund existed before consolidation.
Yeah.
And came through consolidation with that edit that I mentioned to the general terms, which instead of saying "Mary Hogan," said "the elementary students of Middlebury" because as ACSD, it was unclear what the future would look like and it was, they wanted it to be, you know, a gift that served every student in the town in accordance with the wishes of the original donor. So they took Mary Hogan out. I think, as far as Act 73 goes, I would expect that, you know, this trust fund and others around the state will have similar things happen. I can also say that a lot of the opportunities that become McJolton investments, the way that we're thinking about them is, as test rooms or incubators, that could become things that are a good idea, not just for the students of the school of Middlebury, but for all elementary school students. And Keek's a great example of that. Historically funded with McJolton, becomes an opportunity that, you know, makes sense to offer in the general fund to all students and that is now part of that. So, that's sort of an opportunity, incubation pathway that might exist in a post-73 landscape.
I guess I do have one other follow-up question. And again, I'm not sure if this is the right time for it, but I'm thinking about the facilities work and the proposal about potentially expanding onto Mary Hogan and adding some rooms at the end of that wing, which would then require us to disassemble the existing mural. Do you know if Jen's plan would be to include that in the future? This, I know, this may not be a great time.
I'm not sure.
She certainly could.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Cool, thank you.
It would be a shame to lose it.
I know. I feel the same way.
Laura? I know that Mesa helped fund that mural as well, so I'm sure there's appetite there to help with that.
Okay.
Put numbers on every brick and then build it back.
I mean, things like that have been done in the state.
With a barn, you can do it.
Exactly. Thanks, Sam.
Others?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so the next part of the Superintendent's Report is a presentation that Courtney is going to lead us through relative to VTCAP. And before she does, I just want to say a little something about some terms that we're using that kind of come out of some state and federal language and strategic plan work of a number of years ago and are evolving differently now. However, for the purposes of this presentation, they say as they are. So one of them is achievement gap. You know, that's language that is in your strategic plan and is used throughout federal and state language. And that's a term that we don't use to the same degree now as we once did when it came out, Really Have No Child Left Behind, you know, many, many years ago. It can suggest that the gap is in the achievement of the individual student. And so sometimes that can be referred to as an opportunity gap and there can be many other conditions that are used to think about why that gap exists. But that can be a term that may just find to be a poor representation of the discussion as a whole. So it's used in Courtney's presentation because we have not changed the language that is part of the strategic plan and/or the state and federal language that we are continuing to, you know, have at our fingertips. But I wanted to just raise it tonight. And the second one is discussion of historically marginalized groups. One of the things that the Student Outcomes Committee has really worked hard to help Courtney and Nellie and Sonia think about together as you're looking at this presentation tonight, which is very different from last year's presentation on the same material, thanks to that good work. You'll see some disaggregated work that talks about historically marginalized group performance as that is defined by the Agency of Education. So, members of communities that might fall into one of those groups are, can sometimes be understandably offended by that term. And that, the state language, we are required to disaggregate in these ways. But I just think it's important that we acknowledge that and some of the work that Sonia is helping us to do is to work with those community members to determine how, what is a better approach that feels better. So those are just two, just sort of opening cautions, you know, around the language that is built into Courtney's presentation because it exists in our requiring documents. But that is good work that Sonia is leading us through. Any questions about that before we turn this presentation over to Courtney for her to lead us through some dizzying tables and beautiful statistics? Steve?
Could I just ask two clarifying questions? For VTCAP, you have ELA results and math results. Are all students required to take these tests and are they normed? You know, we talked about compare against each other versus normed against an absolute standard. What about those students that have IEPs that address significant learning disabilities? Are they required to take the same tests?
So unless it is written into an IEP that a student takes an alternative assessment,
okay.
they are required to take these exams, just as everyone else is. These exams are criterion-referenced, which means it's, if you think about, okay, if the criteria is here, then how many students are getting to this proficiency place in that criteria? Different from a norm-referenced exam, which is a bell curve, you know, and the performance is, Jamie will find this an oversimplified explanation, I'm sure, but it slides based on, you know, where the majority is. That is not what this is. What we do look for in a criterion-referenced exam is variation in the tests. When we see that across the board, all of a sudden, there's a big jump in performance, that it doesn't seem to be intentional or a drop in performance, we start to look at that statewide and see if there is a test form that appears to have affected its reliability, you know, or perhaps its validity. So, you know, that's just probably more than you wanted to know, but...
You answered the question when you said that if an IEP has a carve-out for alternative testing, that that is...
Which is very, very few.
Okay.
Very few, you know, in that sense. So, yeah, thanks for the question.
I think we had five students take our, it's called the Multi-State Alternative Assessment in ACSD last year in grades three through nine, for context.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, this is the first slide of my presentation and I think it's a really important one and I'm going to tell you why. All of these photos were taken from this school year and I would have chosen 200 if I could have, but I just chose these eight. They depict our teachers and our students as learners, which is something that's really important in our shared understanding of high-quality learning. And they also depict our learners doing things that are really important. Learning to drive motor vehicles, taking care of the environment, collaborating with each other, taking care of each other, experiencing joy, representing math models in many different ways on chart paper, I could go on and on, but you're not going to see these on the following slide, so I just wanted to point out that these pictures say a lot. And this is only, you know, in the last six weeks of our school year. I also wanted to say thank you to the Student Outcomes Committee because they've really been allowing Nellie and Sonia and I to talk about a lot of the data we're going to look at in just more of a conversational way and ask questions that would be hard to ask in this context. And they helped us think about what data might be most useful to look at tonight. And then also, Owen Prescott is our Data Systems Manager and he helped pull together a lot of these slides. So, this is a big jump to looking at some pretty broad quantitative data. I warned you it was going to be a big shift from that slide to this slide. And a couple of things I want to say before I orient you in what you're looking at here is, in no way are these numbers a judgment of our teachers and in no way are they a judgment of our students. This is a really broad look at one data point that's identified as a target in the strategic plan that the AOE also uses to break out one domain of our annual snapshot report card. So these are our English Language Arts results from the last three testing years, which are also the only three testing years of the VTCAP, with all students in a school combined. And the reason for that is that that's the only way we can give you a school-by-school comparison without making the data identifiable, possibly by student. So for our elementary schools, you're looking at third through fifth grade data and then moms is sixth or eighth grade data and the high school is ninth grade data. I should also say you have these in your meeting materials, but I've reordered the slides slightly.
Keep us on our toes.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
But none of the slides themselves have changed, just the order.
And Courtney, the blue is proficient and above.
Right, we've lumped proficient and what the state calls proficient with distinction into just one category here. Originally, we had it broken out similar to the data we showed last year, if you remember, in the spring. I think it was late May. We looked at this same data that you're looking at here without the new years, the spring 2025 yet. And we looked at it just proficient and not proficient. But Dr. Baker and I were looking at this, and she said, you know, it'd be really helpful to look at, of the students in the red, which are partially proficient, because that's different than just not proficient. I'm gonna move forward a slide, and you'll see the same exact orientation, but our math results. There's probably many questions you could ask about these slides, probably many of which we wouldn't be able to answer on the spot here. But before I move on, these two slides are a really broad overview, a school-by-school comparison. And then I'm gonna take you in to really zoom in at a much more detailed look of the data in relation to the strategic plan Goal Three, Targets One and Two. Anything before I move on to that? Thinking back to that first slide I showed, I was rereading this Goal Three as I was putting this together. And I think it's worth reading aloud. "ACSD's learning environment will inspire a passion for learning and value diverse identities and abilities while preparing our students to make positive contributions to the community and beyond." That's Goal Three from our strategic plan. And then there are five targets under this goal, but I have just Targets One and Two here because they are the two targets that directly mention our state assessment data, which is what we're looking at tonight. So Target One says, "ACSD will raise each grade cohort's math and literacy proficiency levels to 80% proficient by 2029, as measured by the VTCAP." And Target Two says, "The Achievement Gap", and there's an asterisk there because of what Dr. Baker brought up. Both Sonya and Nellie reviewed these slides with me ahead of this presentation. And Sonya really emphasized that she'd love to see different language there. And we talked about what different options might be and how we might operationalize different language when we're working together in the office. But tonight, I've just quoted the strategic plan as is. "The achievement gap between the general population and historically marginalized students will be decreased by 50% for each grade cohort for math and literacy between 2024 and 2029, with 2023 as baseline data." We talked about this target in the Student Outcomes Committee and unpacked a bit, okay, what is it we're measuring here? And so there's two things I'm going to point out about this gap. In future slides, really model out, what is this gap? And what is it looking like for us? One is that the general population in these slides represents any students who, at the time of the assessment, weren't identified as falling into any of the, any one of the historically marginalized categories. And the historically marginalized group, I'm gonna break out further on the next slide. But before I do that, I wanna say that what we've done to look at this target is we've looked at what was the gap between those two groups in 2023? And what would it look like to cut that number, which I think was 23% for one class that we're gonna zoom in on, in half? So in that scenario, you would cut, for that grade cohort, say, the class of 2023, if the gap between those two groups was 23%, to cut it in half over five years would be to reduce that gap to 12, about 12%, not exactly. Okay. This language comes from the Agency of Education's Educational Equity Framework for the purposes of disaggregating this data, which we need to do and we discussed doing at the Student Outcomes Committee so we can really look at what is that gap? And where are we experiencing equity and opportunity? So for the purposes of that, when and where possible, we're going to look at the proficiency on the VTCAP of students in these categories. We weren't able to show the data for all of these categories in all scenarios because the end size was too small. This is a lot to look at on one slide. If you're watching online, these are in the meeting materials, and it might be easier to look at it printed or in front of you. But to orient you, I'll first take you across the bottom of the slide where it shows each of our current cohorts, or grade cohorts, because the targets name individual grade cohorts. So you can see, all the way to the left is our current fourth grade. That's the class of 2025, uh, class of 2034. And they've taken this assessment one time, which was last spring, when they were in third grade. And then if you move over one, that's our current fifth grade. They've taken the assessment twice, in third grade and in fourth grade. And they'll take it again this spring. And then for each of the following grade cohorts, we do have three years of data now. The state data for the spring of 2025 has not yet been released. So you won't see a dark blue state average bar in any of the 2025 data sets. So what you're looking at, I like to look at the class of 2032 because it's the first class, it's the youngest class that has three years of data. And it also represents a group of students who took that test for the majority, unless they moved or someone moved in, which does happen quite a bit. Those students took that test in one school, for the most part. So that class of 2032 data doesn't represent a change of building. It doesn't represent a major transition. It's three years of the test in third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. In the first two years, '23 and '24, you can see the state average. Then the light blue bar is all of our students combined. The orange bar is our nonhistorically marginalized demographic. And then the tan bar is our historically marginalized demographic. And I see Ellen has her hand up.
Okay. Ellen, thank you.
Thanks, Courtney. You, I may have misheard you, but we're talking about the 2025 data. That is only showing us what kids took in the spring of '25, right? The state has not yet released the fall '25 data, is that right?
It hasn't released the spring '25 data.
At the state.
Okay.
At the state level.
At this, oh, at the state level, okay. So when we look at our own 2025 data, is that including the fall and the spring VTCAP?
The assessment is only administered in the spring.
Oh, got it. Okay. Sorry, I thought this was one that was done twice a year. Okay, never mind.
Courtney, I could add just a contextual point. I think many of you might have seen the article in the Boston Globe that drew attention to the decline in Vermont's performance over a 13-year period, and then the Agency of Education's response about that. I'd like to draw your attention to the second section in from both the left and the right. Courtney, I think the one coming in from the left is, that represents fourth grade, the second bar, is that right?
The current fourth grade is this first.
Yep, and then keep going, so.
Here.
Yep, so that, where that dot is, I love that dot, is actually last year's fourth grade, correct?
Yes.
So you can see that even though we don't have a state test, I think our blue line is quite a bit better from third grade to fourth grade in that scenario, right?
Yes.
So if you then go to the other side and you come in one, I think, Courtney.
Here?
Nope, keep going all the way over to the right. Keep going. Okay, that right there. Whoop.
Current test.
Yeah, now, go to the left by, like, just like a little smidge. Okay, so right there, that group that we don't have state results for in that pod is last year's eighth grade, is that correct?
Yes.
So you can see that our blue line goes up steadily in that way. It would surprise me if the state's lines are also not inclining in that respect. And so if the political narrative at the moment has been that Vermont students are declining in VTCAP scores, it's quite possible that when the agency releases the 2025 scores, that the state has trended the way our district has trended. And that narrative might be changing with the secretary's next message. So I just wanna point that out. If it follows the same trajectory as our students, which I would have no reason to think that it wouldn't. That's it. Thank you, Courtney.
Yeah. So this is, this exact same model is replicated on the next slide for math.
Before you leave this.
Yes.
The highest, yeah, the very last column on the right kind of jumps out to me.
Yeah.
So what's your thoughts around what's happening there?
I'm gonna try and not say anything that I don't know for sure is certain.
And I appreciate that.
But that's actually the reason we added the blue bar.
Yeah.
But we don't have last spring's data yet. But I'm very curious to know what the state's bar does to see if this is an anomaly in the test or if there really is something happening there. Obviously, that represents a transition to a new building. So students are tested in a different way. I said I'm gonna try to avoid leading you with pieces of information that would explain, but they go from taking the test in a classroom to the gymnasium. They take math and English Language Arts in a new schedule, which is semester-based. They, we bring in new students to the high school. And probably like 20 other true facts that are all variables that could speak to this. So without, and what we have done with the high school is really look at a student-by-student analysis of what happened and how students are trending over time. But I think that's something we're still in conversation about, and we're eager to see the state data.
If the state comes in lower, would it suggest like a harder test, like you were talking about?
A form differential, yes, yes. So we need, it would be impossible for us to make any real accurate observations about this without the state context, you know? So we're just gonna wait for that, and then we'll see what we know. And in the meantime, our teachers are meeting kids where they are and bringing them everywhere they can go. Thank you.
So same data for math. With the exception of the class of 2031, which is, I'll just speak for myself, surprising me with its math growth. We weren't expecting to see a lot of change in math. It's not where our investments have been until this year. And we have quite a bit of staffing and professional development and embedded PD targeted at math right now, which is to say, I don't find much of this surprising, except that current seventh grade class is an interesting one to look at. So the next slide attempts to disaggregate the data further, but in order to do that, we had to combine grades three through 11 together. It's really actually grades three through nine because the 11th grade only takes the science assessment. So this is grades three through nine combined as a way to look at three groups juxtaposed against each other. We have white and non-white students, non-IEP and IEP students, or I should say, students not on an IEP, and students who are on an IEP, and then students who aren't experiencing economic hardship, students who are represented at the time of the assessment as economically disadvantaged over three years, English Language Arts. So when we think about that gap, we're thinking about students represented by these and other categories also. But here in ACSD, except for our multilingual learners, these are the majority of categories that are represented in that gap that we're gonna look at.
Courtney, these are the only ones that are big enough to be able to present publicly?
Right, exactly.
Laura?
This is the percentage of students that are proficient.
Correct, percent proficient. I'm gonna go to the same slide for math.
You may have already answered this, Courtney, so apologies. But who all is included in economically disadvantaged versus non-economically disadvantaged?
It's any student who, at the time of the assessment, was identified in Power School, which is our student information system, as receiving free or reduced lunch, or being eligible to receive free or reduced lunch.
Okay, thank you. Courtney?
Sorry. Could that group also include others that are already in some of the other groups?
Yes. If you, yes, there could be overlap in those groups.
Okay.
For students on 504, are they non-IEP in this group?
Correct.
Mary Heather.
Sorry.
No.
Was 504 considered as a, another category as well? Because this would encapsulate, obviously, IEP and 504 would encapsulate disabled students. Has 504 been included in these?
In these, no. When students take the assessment, their 504 can feed into certain accommodations. But because of the way students are entered in Power School for this presentation, the cleanest way to look at the data was to pull IEPs, students on IEPs at the time of the assessment. So there might be a student, I know for a fact, there might, there are students who currently have IEPs who did not in 2023.
Right, yeah, yeah.
You have to remember that also. And in 2023, spring of, none of our current district administrators were here. But we have identified the possibility that not all of our students who were on IEPs were flagged correctly in Power School. So there is a question about that data for the spring of 2023.
I can also just add that for reduced status, it's at or below 185% of the federal poverty line. I can also just add that for reduced status, it's at or below 185% of the federal poverty line. And all the way down to 131%, and then 130% or lower is free status. So those are the two bands that get tracked.
Thanks. That's a good addition.
One last question. Yeah, so sorry. And you may or may not have the answer to this. But I recall, you know, we've had anomalies with the counting of students who fall into that economically disadvantaged category. And obviously, that number sort of shifted. For us, we've seen that reflected in our budget presentations. How is that also kind of, you know, so our numbers from 2024 or 2023 might not quite be in my, in my communication as well. It may not exactly be representative of what actually, how many students actually.
And that discovery happened in the 2324 school year. I'm recalling like late fall into early winter. So the question then is, at what point was that status corrected in Power School? And when was it loaded into the testing software? Which we did not really dig into, but it is a question that crossed my mind also.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe you know this, Courtney. If not, we can make a note of it. You know, there's the Direct Cert certification that Matt refers to when we're talking about the budget proposals that you're referencing. And then there's the way in which that information is captured on the test. Do you have reason to believe that those are the same?
That's a good question. And Matt, I don't know if you know this, but it goes back to where are we pulling? I think we're pulling into Power School from Direct Cert.
Direct Cert populates in Power School. The state pulls from Power School in their data collections. Don't know which data collection the state used to match up with individual students for the sake of creating this data profile that was used in DC cap. So do you know if it's DC six or is it a different data collection?
We pull this right from Power School.
So I think it's reasonable to say that we probably have students who are eligible through direct certification that are currently represented in the students who are not experiencing economic hardship. I think that's a reasonable conclusion and we'll continue to follow that as we go. But it is where we are. It's where we have right now. So that's what we're gonna talk about.
So is 2023 really been the year where it was entered incorrectly? Or does it also go in?
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five.
Where what was entered incorrectly?
Where the data was entered incorrectly for?
Where the Direct Cert didn't happen and it might have.
That was twenty, that was the 2324 school year.
Okay.
Holden twenty-four entered into the LTW ADM use in the twenty-five budget.
Right.
Became part of the FY twenty-five operating story. Used it modeling for FY twenty-seven and beyond.
Yep. Yes, thank you.
Do we remember these presentations?
Yes, we do.
We're collecting a lot of dots over time.
And I would say that's a to-be-continued.
Yes.
I'm really taking you through all different ways of looking at this data, which you've probably figured out by now. But what I'd like to do is zoom in on that class I was talking about earlier, which is the class of 2032. Not because it's this class, but because for me, it's helpful in thinking about goal three, targets one and two. Because it names raising a single grade cohort to eighty percent while reducing the gap, it's helpful to zoom in on a cohort and see what that would look like. This is our current sixth grade ELA data versus math data. So ELA on the left, math on the right. And you're looking at our state average where it's available versus all ACSD students in light blue versus students who don't fall at the time of the test into any of our historically marginalized groups. And then in the camel color, students who fell into any one of those historically marginalized groupings, but to Suzanne's point, or more than one. And then the gap at the bottom is the gap between the nonhistorically marginalized demographic and the historically marginalized demographic as opposed to all students, all ACSD students versus the historically marginalized demographic, which was a conversation that unfolded at the Student Outcomes Committee. Something I want to point out about this slide is that everybody's growing in ACSD. So all of our students are growing. Our nonhistoric marginalized demographic is growing. And our historically marginalized demographic is also growing. And yet, our gap is also growing.
Yeah.
So everything is growing here. And that, you know, we're gonna look at more closely in the next slides. But that's what's a little bit tricky about tracking progress towards target one and two simultaneously.
Ellie? Is okay if I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Just thinking about this data, I was curious if the percentages are figured out by, in the individual classes and then combined? Or if they're combined as all student cross-scores? And the reason I ask is because like I know that this current sixth grade class had a class of six students at Salisbury, which means any one student had a huge percentage of that class. Where if they were then mixed in with all of the sixth graders from ACSD, their score had a much less effect on the percentage.
Right.
Figured in and then like collected as a whole before the percentages were figured out? Or was the percentages by school figured out and then combined?
I think I understand your question. But while we do look at school-by-school data down to the individual student, this data is pulled from all students. So a roster of all students in the class of 2032. Not, we didn't go to Mary Hogan and take their nonhistorically marginalized demographic and then add it to say Salisbury students.
Right.
I just have a question. So for target two, like in the graph furthest to the right, the class of 2032 this year, or last spring, I guess, the twenty-five percent gap. So target two would mean that at the end of our strategic plan timeline, it's twenty-five cut in half, right? It's not like, it's fifty percent of the current gap.
That, when you say twenty-five percent,
The twenty-five percent gap.
Over there, all the way to the right in math?
Yeah.
What we discussed at Student Outcomes Committee is that we would look at, and this might change. All of this is really in conversation. And I think a point we might end on tonight is that more discussion is needed. To your question, if we look at 2023 as a baseline, the way I understood it is we would look at, so if we're talking about math, there's a twenty-four percent gap there. And by 2029, I think, we would want that to be twelve percent.
Right, yeah.
Over the five years.
Which is, if everybody's growing, right? That's not, that's not always the easiest thing to try to figure out in terms of how that would work. I mean, I also, you know, I, you know, all of our schools are growing. You know, Mary Hogan has a, as a, they have systematically done a really great job of ensuring that their, that their population is moving forward in more than one year's worth of growth, you know, in impressive ways. And as a district, we cannot grow that much without Mary Hogan's success. And so I just want to make sure that we're pointing that out because that's real. And it's, there's a big difference in school improvement when you are a school at scale, which Mary Hogan can count as, and when you are a smaller school. The strategies are different, the approaches are different, the way you go about it is different. And, and one of the things that Mary Hogan really needs to be applauded for is the way in which Jen and the interventionists and the teams have embraced a systematic approach to moving kids to make more than a year's worth of growth, which is what makes those lines move. It's not just that you made a year's worth of growth. You gotta make more than a year's worth of growth in order for more kids to be proficient. So they've really done a nice job with that. And I, and I just want to make sure that doesn't get lost in the, in the conversation as we look at these, these categories that have to be lumped together in order to show the disaggregation.
The next slide follows the approach of the previous slides where we can take this same class of 2032, our current sixth grade, and try and further disaggregate it. Although where you see an NA, that was the best symbol I could get to represent the dataset that's too small. It doesn't really mean not applicable in this context. So this is the same data broken out for that grade cohort over the three years in ELA. And in math. The last two slides represent our first shot at a conversation that also came out of the Student Outcomes Committee. We met once, but it was for two hours. And I think we were able to talk about a lot of things. And it attempts to model out the two targets. So first, if we just look at target one, or I should say, all of the data in the white is our real data for targets one and two. That represents our three years of real data. And then any data highlighted in green or yellow is modeling. We don't have that data yet. If we look at just target one, you can see us, if we were to continue on this, say, five percent growth trajectory exceeding goal three, target one. Although I will also say, I believe it's going to get harder to grow by that much each year. So that's an optimistic modeling. But if we were to just forecast in that way, I think a realistic forecasting might have a tapering effect. But we just went with a steady with the numbers that we had. So that's target one. If you look at target two, the first line there is our percent of the nonhistorically marginalized demographic percent proficient. You can see the same thing you see in target one, but even, you know, even more exaggerated growth in that demographic. And then if you skip down to the bottom line, we have modeling for our students in the historically marginalized demographic who might be the percent proficient, what it would have to be in order to, I think I might, oh no, I have that blue dot. I was gonna stand up, but I'm gonna get this. If this is our real gap, twenty-four percent, using 2023 as a baseline, if we're going to cut that by fifty percent by the year 2029 to twelve percent, then this bottom line represents the amount of growth this demographic would have to show in order to reach that target two. We've highlighted it yellow, really just to accentuate that that's a nine percent increase for that group, which is substantially more than the five percent increase each year we modeled out for the nonhistorically marginalized demographic. And this is only, this is only ELA data and only the class of 2032. So to start looking at this level of curiosity, you really have to choose what is it we're gonna look at. And even so, it's lumping that historically marginalized demographic. It's lumping a lot of communities of students together. And the next slide does the same for math. And it's the same story, except for in that bottom line, it's yellow now. You're looking at anywhere from an eleven to a thirteen percent increase each year in order to reach that same target. Sent Wendy an email late last week that said, I don't know how to end this presentation. You know, choices felt like more pictures or like key takeaways. But this is the last slide. I think what's next is really more conversation. And like I started this presentation saying, it's been a great opportunity to sit at the table with Nellie, and Sonia's gonna join us, and the Student Outcomes Committee to talk about these things and then to have their perspectives and to have them say, oh, but what about this dataset you reminded us of last spring? And what would this look like? Feels like a functionable way forward. Whereas it sometimes is hard to have that meaty discussion here in this context.
Ellen?
Thanks. Courtney, I had a question on this slide and the one before, which I might stumble through. So be patient with me. But I'm thinking about the ambition of these percentages that we're, that we would need to meet in growth to meet the overall strategic goal targets. And you had mentioned earlier how our district is now investing greatly in math and math intervention, which is really new for us. I wonder if you or Wendy, knowing that you all haven't been in your current positions for very long, but if you can remind us to the best of your abilities, how long ago our district started investing heavily in literacy? Because I'm wondering if some of those investments from the last few years are part of how we can understand the larger percentage increases that we see on ELA scores than what we've seen in math so far. Again, not predicting the future or guaranteeing anything. But can we hope that some of these much newer investments in math might start to bear similar fruit? Maybe we don't always get to nine percent year over year, but something closer to what we started to see in ELA.
Yeah. I can get pretty close and say that the onset of our deep dive into literacy and early literacy and the science of reading came with the onset of Heather Gevo's hiring. And she was a COVID-era ESAR-funded position. So I could get pretty close and say maybe she started in her, this role, I want to say in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. I'm looking at Matt because I don't know as well when that funding came in, but it was then.
The ESAR funding?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember her pre-presentation when we were at Salisbury.
Yeah.
And I think twenty-two was when we had the presentation. It sounds about right.
So three to four years?
Yeah.
And the other?
I think that presentation was in 2023, just because I was there.
Oh, okay.
So I, I think that was even more recent, actually. If we're thinking of the same one, Barb.
Okay.
At the Salisbury school.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Heather definitely came on board before then. And the other thing that's interesting is a lot of that early work was in K one, two. And this assessment starts in third grade. So we wondered, because our students are starting stronger on this test in literacy, we wondered if that's why. But again, it's hard because there's so many variables to say for certain why things are the way they are. But we can say. But we can say our third graders are starting stronger on this assessment.
And I think we, anecdotally, we've been able to talk with some of the building principals and, and feel pretty comfortable that the places where there's greater fidelity to the things that Heather has guided people to put into place have seen results that have borne out that work. And so, so some of the things that, that you'll see that, that relate to increases in ELA also relate to sort of a greater fidelity to those strategies and that work, you know, as leadership stability has come into play, or, you know, just kind of people have been able to focus, you know, in that area of work. So, so I, I think, you know, and as, as we have three years of mathematics, I think I wouldn't be surprised at what we'll see, a similar trend.
Other questions about these slides?
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
It really is eye-opening to really look at the data and to then equate to the targets that we've set and what that really means. We didn't know that back then. Go ahead, Mary Heather.
I do have a question about how you are thinking about implementing changes in practice to specifically address the gap, knowing that what we're seeing is across the whole district, but obviously the distribution of those students may not be, you know, equally scattered across the district. So yeah, I'm just curious about how, yeah, our, our strategic investments will pan out in our different learning communities to specifically address this gap? And how that will be presented to us while still preserving, obviously, student privacy and all that? So how, how will that, how will that work?
One of the things I could offer is that tomorrow, as a matter of fact, our ed programming team, which is Sonia and Nellie and Courtney and me at the district level, will be meeting with Megan Roy, who was one of the authors of Act 173, which is known in the field as the MTSS law in Vermont, where, where our, you know, what we do for everyone, the interventions that we provide to some, and then the specialized services that we provide when needed, was really articulated. So she's, because we have someone from Chicago, someone from New York, right? And Courtney coming, you know, through the system, and me, you know, all, we're gonna come together, understand what that law looks like, and then take the work that Sonia is doing with our building principals and our interventionists, and take a look at what is the level of intervention that we're providing across the district? What are those strategies? How is that in alignment with what the vision was for what students should be getting that are showing strain in any of these areas? And, and I, I think that will get us to a place where we can be more articulate about the exact strategies that are being used consistently. When we see various elements of student performance that tells us that something is needed, you know, that is in addition to what is developing for the whole classroom. So, so that is work that Sonia will likely do some presentation around when she does her presentation with the board, which I think is beginning of February. You will, you'll begin to hear some of that work from her. So, so I think that will be very helpful.
Thank you. Steve?
I will say the IEP percentages are hard to see. Just as challenging to see percentages in sixes and sevens, kind of regardless of how we slice and dice this. So you need to think a bit more on those to understand them. I do want to encourage other board members, according to Courtney's wonderful chart that she gave us about the number of assessments we do in the district. If I counted right, I think we do 29. If I understand that data as one of them. And so there are a lot of other data areas. And I, I know on the Student Outcomes Committee, we've had a number of conversations about what we feel is represented well by the data and what we don't feel is represented well. And we also, in our goal three targets, that increase by 80% proficient, we do specifically reference VT cap. But then historically marginalized, marginalized and decreasing that gap, we don't specifically recognize VT cap. And so certainly, I think any work we can do in VT cap is obviously great, but there is also another universal out there that I think we should also kind of keep an eye on.
Great.
Look forward to seeing other data that helps to kind of illustrate more of this.
I'm just so proud of the work that the team has done. I mean, last year's presentation was just the first two slides, right? I mean, so there's so much more now, and, and that is a huge part of being able to move forward. I mean, this is, we're looking at this at a district level, but all the building principals are also doing this analysis within their own buildings, with their teams, and seeing what that looks like. And that's where the real power of this comes. And, and so I think there are exciting things ahead for kids. And it feels good to have been able to have this conversation tonight, which is a lot different from last year's conversation with the same subject, I think. Are we ready to move on? Thank you, Courtney. Yeah. Thank you. And team. Okay, Act 73 update. So so quickly, obviously, there's the redistricting task force. They are, are beginning to coalesce around three different concepts of maps. Interestingly, one of them appears to be emerging as a map that might include a BOSI's approach or a regional approach that is a little bit different from the, the way people normally talk about districts. I don't know whether that will hold. It's very hard to find the exact maps and, you know, it's a, that, that is frustrating from a public transparency perspective, especially as we're asked to, to provide information about them. So, you know, we've provided that feedback to Chelsea Myers from the VSA, who is attempting to ensure that we are able to have better resources than we have right now. There are public hearings organized by the commission that relate to this. The one that is for our CBSA, Champlain Valley Superintendent's Association Region, is held at Winuski, but there is an online option. I will be attending the second part of that after a Bridgeport Community Meeting that is also virtual. And I would highly suggest that any board members or community members who wish to, to listen in, provide comments, the whole meeting will be taking comment and testimony. And anything that is not able to be aired will be part of the public record if it is mailed. So, so that is one of four meetings that they're having around that. There is some controversy brewing around maybe some preemptive actions, specifically reported by Senator Beck as, as he has, is beginning to have some conversations with board chairs in local areas around doing some voting this year about closing high schools to preserve the idea that you could be a district of choice on a 912 level. These are Cabot and Danville districts where the assumption is that they would tuition the St. Johnsbury Academy, where he happens to work. The, the chair of the Cabot School Board has declined to take up the matter. It's, you know, their board is not in support of thinking about that now. The Danville community has, their board has received a petition to hold the vote, which was started by a teacher who also works at St. Johnsbury Academy. So there's, there are some objections to that level of advocacy that feel preemptive by somebody who's a member of the redistricting task, task force, and that's being reported widely. I, yeah, Act 73 indicates that nothing moves forward unless the legislature agrees on a district map, which we don't even have any out of the committee yet. So, so that's, that's, that's part of the reporting that you will hear if you're following that matter. There are two, two other consequential parts of Act 73 that, that we're, we're following right now. One is the Small, Small School Sparsity Committee that is part of the state board. It might not have that name exactly right, but it is a committee of the state board that was mandated by Act 73 to begin to determine when a school is small by necessity versus small by choice. So that group has been assembled, appointed by the state board, and, and is beginning to take testimony. That, the first testimony happened on Friday, and they began to dig into what's the definition of small? What's the definition of sparse? What's the definition of necessity? Is it, you know, there's no other school within a certain number of miles? Is it a bus ride that's longer than this? Is there a geography that is, you know, an impediment? So these are the conversations that are beginning. And, and I, I would say those are in the initial stages, but that's happening. So that is not difficult to find if you are following the state board. And, and, you know, I've provided you and would certainly provide, you know, the community with links to that material. The other thing that's happening is that there, Act 73 calls for graduation standards that are statewide. Generally, superintendents don't feel this is, you know, a, a, a bad idea in that in the proficiency era, everybody's got a different spin on these proficiencies, right? So if you were to go from Middlebury to Mountabe, you have two totally different graduation standards, proficiencies that are developed in two totally different systems. And, and maybe that's not necessary, you know, to that degree. So, so I think generally speaking, the, the idea has been received with some positivity. The concern is that the agency of ed will be displaying their idea about what that, those graduation standards should look like quickly and resolutely, in a manner that significantly changes the way that we thought of what we value, you know, in Vermont as, as educational outcomes. I don't believe it would align with our learner profile, nor would it align with our strategic plan indicators that are the same. So, so the discussion around that will happen at the state board, and there will be a long period of advocacy related to that, that, that will begin as the agency of ed leads that with their proposal. So that is of great concern among many professional educators, not because we don't agree that a better aligned state system would be a benefit, but, but in the concern that we would take it in, in a direction that is very different from what is part of, what is most valued about our educational system. So, so that's, that's what we're, we're ensuring that we're well-prepared to represent relative to what our students and our communities have valued here. Those are the salient Act 73 updates I can think of. Is there anything that you have a question about? Steve?
As someone who spent time looking for those three mythical maps as well, I, I wish that some of the people involved in that redistricting task force would maybe spend less time sharing their kind of opinions quietly and maybe more time making some information available so that we could have a look at some of this. That's my thought.
Yeah. I'll certainly advance that perspective wherever I can.
And maybe we're already doing this, but with these hearings that are coming up, the public hearings, would this be appropriate to somehow get it in all of our newsletters for our schools so that parents know this is happening? I know our legislators may have blurbs out there. I'm just concerned that it's not necessarily on the radar for folks, and they might miss the opportunity to speak up.
Yeah, I think my hope is that some of those transparency issues, you know, whether there's materials that aren't quite finished and made, or whether, you know, it's, it's that there's not enough agreement to, to make it something that is a real proposal. Whatever the reason is, could be resolved such that there could be a communication that I could even send out that says, here's where this is, these are the maps that are under consideration, and your time for public comment is here. That's what I would like to do. So I'm hoping that maybe by the end of the week, we've been able to shake some of that loose to enable that kind of communication to happen, you know, by superintendents really across the state. You know, that, that is what we are pushing for to, in service to our communities, to your point.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. Any questions by folks?
Just as a, another point, while people think of whether they have questions, you know, we recently were, were given information that we will be considered favorably by NIOSC and the International Baccalaureate for accreditation on a K-12 basis. We, we're the only district in the country so far to achieve that. And, and we are the only district in the state that has a K-12 accreditation of that kind. That accreditation is a district accreditation. And so part of the information that, that we are ensuring, ensuring to share on the operational side is, is the length of that, you know, what that is based around, and, and the importance of those things continuing in those conversations. Should these districts shift and change, that accreditation, you know, would, would certainly be in question because the district itself is different and arguably not all the schools in the new district are doing the thing that relates to the accreditation standard. So that's something that we're, we're watching very carefully as we move forward.
First, congratulations to you all guys. You know, for
Yep. Yes.
I wanted to say, great job on the fidelity, apparently, of implementing the IB program because that is rigorous and it's not easy to do. And we haven't been doing it that long. And kudos to the staff and the faculty for coming so far and doing so well.
Yeah, it's, it's, one of the things that we said is if, if, you know, seven years ago, when, when you began thinking about this, you could know where you would be today, how would that feel? And I think generally speaking, that, that feels good. It doesn't mean we don't have work to do, of course, which is the nature of these accreditations. They're self-reflected processes against identified standards. But, but we, everything had to be built, you know, in, in a common way, and, and it is. And, and we didn't take the easy way out. You know, this, the, the kind of transdisciplinary inquiry-based instruction that students are receiving, that's not the, that's not the easiest way to interact with students during the school day. And, and so, you know, our staff has a remarkable commitment, and Courtney and their team led us through a beautiful process of self-reflection. And they've been asked to, to present at the Guild of International Baccalaureate Schools, right, later this week, about the process and its collaborative nature and, and the way in which it really dug into the classrooms across ACSD and brought forth evidence and discussion about places where we could celebrate our work, and then places where we need to hone our approach. And it, it's really, it's, it's, it's something that sometimes people say, well, why do we do this anyway? You know, and, and it has not felt like that here. It, it may be moments, but not as a whole. It has really not felt like that here. And so it's, it's wonderful to be able to celebrate this work.
Thank you, guys. Awesome.
I have no other, no other.
No other other?
No other.
Awesome. Both our student reps couldn't make it this evening, so we'll go on to reporter the chair. And your board materials, starting on page 27 of the materials, you will see a proposed ACSD redistricting testimony response based on input from board members and using tools to summarize that data. And what my hope is this evening, that we can approve that so that we can then send this to the redistricting task force.
this to the redistricting task force. As you may recall, there was the survey, the deadline for that survey response was the sixth, and at the last board meeting, we chose to take an alternate choice to give us more time to be reflective of the, you know, board input. So at this point, you have the materials in your board pack. I sent an email, you know, kind of like, please look at this stuff. So what I'd like to do is just open it up to some discussion around this proposed response. And, you know, we'll start there. Oh, Ellen, thank you.
There were a couple of suggestions that I had, Barb. On the whole, I thought this was, I assume, a nice representation of a lot of different input, but on page, for me, it's showing up at page 29 in the materials, but page three of this particular packet under, in section, question six, what are the challenges or weaknesses of your current district or system, school facility and enrollment issues? The first bullet point, I was wondering if underutilized elementary schools should be underutilized elementary school buildings? I think of a school as being more than the building, and so if we're saying that the school is underutilized, that just begs questions for me about what we mean. And then for the second bullet point, I wanted to suggest changing the language to fluctuating student populations and inconsistent multi-grade classrooms. And the reason for that is going back to conversations that the policy committee had had last fall, I think. Courtney and Wendy had brought really interesting data showing that as much as anything, it's really the inconsistency and the unpredictability of the multi-classroom configurations that creates some academic challenges, but where those multi-grade classrooms are consistent and somewhat predictable, they don't necessarily have those same challenges. So I just wanted to offer that, those edits or suggestions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Very good. Steve?
Yeah, similar. Really appreciate the work to pull this together. I did have a bit of a process question and then some thoughts. In the executive committee, it looks like there was four kind of different options for this, and what we have in the board pack resembles one of those options, but then there's also some small edits to it. So did it go survey? Was it going to go into an AI tool? And then was there edits made after that AI tool?
Right. We, yeah, and Mary Heather, you can help me on this one.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Yeah, because she helped pull this together.
Yeah, so we took the results of the survey, so everybody's actual just answers, fed that into an AI tool and created two different sort of versions, one kind of bullet point oriented and one in paragraph form.
Yeah.
One with kind of initial detail, and then I instructed it to do, provide a little more detail for the second one. So the four different versions that were included in the executive committee meeting materials are those four things, so kind of regular detail and more detail for paragraph form or bullet point form. And then in terms of editing, we wanted to kind of go through as an executive committee to see if what the AI tool generated made sense, kind of passed the test of, does that sound right? Does that, is that consistent with what people had provided in their responses? And also, we talked about what did we think would be the most helpful and the most utilized by the committee that we're sending it to? So there was some argument about like, you know, doing the paragraph form because it seemed more professional, but also doing the bullet point form because it seemed more readable and actionable by the folks who are actually making these maps. So what we decided to do was do a form that was similar to what we had done earlier in the year, earlier, earlier last year when this whole process was first starting and we created a testimony about the whole governor's, you know, reconfiguring and redesigning education in Vermont. So we decided to do a similar thing and just do a preamble to kind of bring out the highest priority points that we felt, you know, deserved highlighting, and then do the sections by bullet point because it seemed to just be more readable and a little easier for us to tackle kind of reviewing the material. And that's what kind of went into creating this final draft for you all.
All right.
So that's the process that we followed.
Thank you.
Any additions, subtractions?
No, that's good. Okay. We did watch out for things that our employees would find not factually accurate also, you know, so that anything like that, that AI didn't know that it was saying, you know, I personally highlighted and then, you know, they made a determination as to whether to address that.
Right.
All right. Well, yeah, I had three thoughts. One on page three, where it talks about ACSD as several underutilized elementary schools. When we, on the 12th of August at the facilities committee, it's my understanding at the high school, we have 530 students, and that school right now, as it is, can have a max of 747. So I think we may want to consider adding underutilized high school in there as well. Would be one thing I'd put out there. Page, also on page three, where it says, under equity gaps and staffing shortages, some schools lack access to full-time X, Y, and Z. I think as a board, we may consider taking some more ownership of that and not saying specifically that the school lacks access to it. We have made decisions to staff those schools in certain ways, and I think if we take more ownership of it and be clear if it's due to enrollment or whatever, but the school doesn't lack access. It's because decisions have been made, and I think we could take some more ownership on that. And then the last one on page three, under equity gaps and staffing shortages, I do feel pretty strongly on this one. That last bullet says, staff waste time traveling between schools. And I don't think the staff are wasting time. I think if someone has a responsibility and they're doing the task that they need to, maybe it's an inefficient use of time or something like that, but I do not think it should say staff waste time. I don't think that's fair to the people that get asked to do those tasks. I think we really should consider rephrasing that one some way. So, thank you.
Okay, so in this case, so under school facility and enrollment, the proposal is to change it to the ACSD has several underutilized elementary school buildings and the high school building. We want to include the word building in those as Ellen pointed out. How do folks feel about that change? Mary Heather?
I would say just several underutilized school buildings.
That would work.
Which captures.
Yeah, that would be, that would be, yes, otherwise it's kind of wordy.
How do folks feel about that?
Does that work? Jamie, did you want to add something to that?
Uh, no.
Okay. Steve?
I have several suggestions, but I would like to stay focused on what we're talking about now. So the school facilities and enrollment issue, one thing that we have talked about frequently and that I would like to add here is that small enrollments make data unavailable due to small sample sizes. And that has been a persistent challenge about facilities and enrollment. So I was wondering if we could add that.
I mean, that's kind of why we saw the aggregation of data tonight.
Right.
Right. And that would be consistent. Definitely. Folks okay with adding that? Excellent. And help me, Steve Cash, I want to make sure I got yours.
We have one other under facility, Ellen.
Yeah, and I, those were pretty straightforward, I thought. Yeah, yeah. So I just want to make sure I got, so what would the other two, sorry?
It's just the equity gaps and staffing shortages. Rather than saying schools lack access, I think we need to take the responsibility off of the school.
Not all schools have access.
Something, yeah. I mean, some other way.
Due to budgetary constraints?
Yeah, I mean, something like that, if it's enrollments, numbers, or budgets, but it, like.
What if we said, due to budgetary and enrollment considerations?
Yeah, I think something.
Some schools.
That's good.
Yeah.
Because if we are, as a school board, are sending this letter to the redistricting task force, it just kind of seems a little landish to say the schools lack access or say like, wasn't that your responsibility?
Right.
And then, Steve, spend time traveling between schools?
I don't know how we want to couch that, but I'm not in favor of saying staff waste time traveling between schools.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Not on the staff.
That, our AI.
Yes. Could you say staff time inefficiencies?
Result?
What about our, our staff lose time? I mean, this, I don't know if that sounds less like it's on them, Steve, but I also thought waste sounded a little funny, so I kept in my head thinking like, they lose time by traveling between schools.
I mean, can we just say staff spend time?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I think.
It's a spectacular statement.
I mean, you could just say, staff time is spent traveling between places.
Yeah.
It doesn't imply that our boys are wasting time, but it does show that it's an inefficient use of our resources.
Yeah.
It's also not necessarily a bad time for staff to have a minute between their duties. I know I take lots of minutes between my duties and my own job.
The problem with that is that it's not prep time and it's not instructional time.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So it's dead time, basically.
So if we change ways to spend, is folks okay with that modification? Great.
What I was suggesting, Barb, was staff time is spent traveling between schools.
That sounds fine to me. Is that okay? Okay, thank you. Okay, I think, Steve, you had some additional, then I'll get to Jess.
Under the governance and structural tensions, those two bullet points caused me a little bit of discomfort. Board representation is based on census data, and that's fine, but why are the value judgments perceived by some as uneven? One town holds seven of 13 votes. I mean, that's, one town does hold seven of 13 votes based on census data. So I don't understand why, as a board, I would not say that's uneven. So I'm a little uncomfortable with that.
I think it's uneven, Steve. I think we might feel differently about that. Maybe people feel differently on the board about the evenness of that.
Right, and so this is, this is staking out one side of that argument.
Perceived by some as uneven?
Mm-hmm.
What would you want to say, Steve?
I prefer that we drop that.
See, oh, sorry.
Mary Heather?
I do want to make sure that we're representing.
Input we know.
The input that was received. So I'm not in favor of erasure of input because there's disagreement among board members. I do think it's reasonable to work with, you know, how do we word this to say that somehow the board representation or governance structure is a really sticky topic with this redistricting future? And that consideration about the actual representation of the folks who are included in a new district is a really important and somewhat political. I don't know exactly how to reword it, but I'm not in favor of erasing input that was provided.
Steve Cash?
I do want to point out what we are working with in the kind of AI version, it's most similar to, the bullet point in there says, board representation is uneven. One town holds seven of 13 votes. And so I think the executive committee did some work on this one to wordsmith it down a little bit already, and I do appreciate that, that they tried to kind of build in some space around this one. So I do just want to share that what came out of the AI was stronger worded than what we already have included in this. I mean, unless anybody on the executive committee wants to tell me I'm getting it wrong, but looking through it.
No. No.
Yeah.
Jamie?
I have a question about number seven. Can we, is it okay to move on to that?
Let's get closure on this item.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. Is there another way to word this without dropping it?
Which is perceived by some as uneven and others as fair?
Or there's disagreement?
Where there's disagreement?
So if you were. Go ahead. If you were to use. I guess I would need to know how you would put the word disagreement in there to reword it, to put disagreement. Could someone help me with that? I mean, I will admit that there's long been angst over the fact that we use census data and the fact that Middlebury College students are counted in the national census and therefore they could vote here in Middlebury, should they vote choose? So that helps boost the Middlebury census data. But I'm trying to figure out how we would put that word in here. So I'm just.
And you could say it's, there's disagreement whether or not this is even or uneven, but I sort of feel like the more, just for, this might be a stylistic preference, board representation is based on census data and is perceived by some as uneven and others as fair, feels like the balanced way to represent those two issues.
Yeah. Would that work, Steve?
That works for me.
I mean, can I just say something? It is technically uneven. It may be, the question is whether it's fair.
Right.
Like, it's not perceived as uneven, it's uneven, but the question is whether it's equitable or whether it's fair. So I don't think the way it's worded now, including Ellen's amendment, makes more sense.
So are you saying that the census data is uneven? Because if you're basing it on census data, that's not uneven, that's what the census says.
It's board representation.
Right.
For a town that's.
Based on census data.
Based on, yeah. The entire district. Right.
So is census data uneven? Because that's what it sounds like you're saying.
It is uneven literally means it's not even, it's not equal. Like, there's, it's uneven, and the census data might bear that out. So what, Jamie, I think you're saying is like, is it fair to use the board representation to replicate that unevenness in board representation? But I mean, I think we're getting a little in the way.
Yeah, I think this is a longstanding disagreement that many people have, that it's absolutely no surprise whatsoever, and that we're sort of getting hung up on it. And I feel like we should not rehearse it now, but that this, and Steve Cash's point about the change of the original motion seems to me to signify a degree of editing and wordsmithing that allows for some compromise that seems fine. And I feel like as a result of that process, this feels good and we should move on.
What is it?
Yeah.
With the additional word, Mary Heather?
Yeah, well, I guess what I'm saying, so it sounded like, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ellen, what Ellen had suggested was that just adding, you know, something toward the end that says, and perceived by some as fair, perhaps the uneven is what needs to be changed. We can just say fair and unfair. And that's a pretty literal representation of how folks feel on this board.
That was, worked for me. How about others?
Yep.
Okay, cool. Did you have others, Steve? Did you have others, Steve?
Here specifically, I mean, I have some.
I mean, on the document, and then I'll go to Jess.
Yeah.
Jamie also is in line.
And, and Jamie, yes.
Seven and nine, um, and they're significant, so. I don't know how to move forward, I don't want to monopolize all the time, but.
Okay.
It seems like seven, which says opportunities DC is a bigger district, and risks and concerns nine are both sides of the same question. Seven is small, nine is large. Seven does not have a lot of things that we've talked about as opportunities, and nine seems to have some things in there that are speculative at best, and seem to be based on some old arguments that have been debunked. So I'm not sure how to proceed. Because I don't want to waste the, I don't want to waste the board's time, but.
Mary Heather.
Just a suggestion, maybe we just go through number seven and folks discuss seven. And, Marit, I mean, I do want to remind the board that this, what you see in front of you is based on the input that we received.
Right, which we received five.
We did not receive from everyone, so keep that in mind as you're, as you're commenting. This is the opportunity to provide additional board input into our testimony, so. If I may, just, let's try to refrain from judgment of, of what's sitting in front of you, because it doesn't include every single board, by the way. So I just want to point that out and, and suggest that we just move.
Yeah.
On to number seven.
Okay.
Okay.
So, uh, if, if you would like, um, these are the four things that I thought should be included. What opportunities do you see as a member of a bigger district? The ability to fully staff combined elementaries. More stable elementary class sizes. Less or no need for combined grade classes. And greater opportunity for capital concentration.
What was that last one, Steve?
Greater opportunity for capital concentration.
Sorry, Steve, can you repeat the, sorry, repeat the first that you said?
Ability to fully staff combined elementaries.
Can you clarify what combined elementaries means? And elementary schools?
Uh, elementary schools, yeah, um, yeah, that was shorthand for, uh, one, one of the things that we talked about was not being able to fully staff, i.e. nurses, physical education, music, um, and a combined elementary would be more likely to fully staff those.
Jess?
My comment was also about seven, and I think, I have a few specific ones, but I feel like, the question is, what opportunities do you see as a member of a bigger district? And I just feel like we have no idea what that would look like, so I feel like even some of our answers are, like, increased access to CTE and full IB diploma program assumes that, like, our new bigger district would like, like IB and give access to it, which, like, since we're the only district in the state, like, I would assume probably not. We wouldn't have access to IB. So I just want, I, I, I appreciate this as like everyone's input, but I want to make sure that we're like, we're answering these questions for redistricting task force with a very, like, clear objective of re, redistricting the state of Vermont. So it's not really just like, if we could make our big district bigger, what would be great about it? It's like, someone else is going to make our district bigger. So I just want to make sure that our answers are kind of in line with that, if that makes sense. Like, same for the combined elementary schools, it wouldn't, they wouldn't be combined elementary schools, they'd be new elementary schools. So it wouldn't be, like, the redistricting task force isn't thinking necessarily, we're going to take this school and this school and like shove them together, they're like, oh, this is a whole new geographic area, and so what does that look like? So I just want to make sure that our answers are congruent with who we're giving them to, if that makes sense. Yeah, just like, I don't want to give, I don't know if too much is the right, but I don't think it's super helpful for the redistricting task force to, like, get totally all of our feelings about, like, these very big topics as opposed to what they're asking, if that makes sense.
I know, in going through some of the responses that we did receive, in this particular case, you know, folks were, well, you know, whether or not you combine elementary schools still is a district responsibility. And it's something that, based on policy, you know, similar to what we're, we've been trying to do, right, over the last year or two, is really base it on kids and the outcomes, that kind of thing. And so I know, when I filled this out, you know, I don't necessarily see redistricting helping.
Right.
That, to make that easier, right? And for me, it was more possibly having some synergy at the high school level. You know, where you might be able to combine kiddos, and, you know, we have room for more, where we could have more sections of certain courses, that kind of thing, to give kids more opportunity. But I'm not necessarily personally convinced that by redistricting, my bias is that it's all of a sudden going to solve the, you know, underutilized schools. That's going to take a board, whatever the board is, and coming up with policy, that kind of thing, in the future, to take on that, um, if they so choose to. So I don't necessarily see it, you know, boards can do this today. Right, is, is my thought, you know, as board, you know, and we have taken on more than many boards, right, as far as policy, that kind of thing. So when I was responding to this, I was focusing more on, you know, the real tangible things I could see, potentially, which was more at the high school level. That was just, you know, for, what, what drew my thought process when I was responding to this? Jamie?
I would just like to second the spirit of what Jess and you just said, Barb, because it feels like a, like an incredibly fraught exercise and very much, you know, it feels like those, one of those things where it's like, you know, everything you say can and will be used against you in some capacity. And, um, and so I, I, yeah. I, I sort of appreciate some of what is here, even some of it feels a little vague at times. I agree, like, the increased access, I was just going to say a minute, increased access to IB, and, and it's like, it feels like, that's not what I think of when I, when I think of this process going forward, right? It's not, not at all. But at the same time, it's like, okay, that, that would, that would be cool, maybe, you know? And so there's some tension between using this exercise as kind of a wish list, or, uh, but also, you know, trying to be cognizant of the, of the degree to which it's out of our hands. And so, to me, sometimes saying, I guess some of the things that you brought up, Steve, seemed to me, the things that are with, to some extent are within our hands right now. We don't need a redistricting task force to do certain things that you said. And then, you know, if that's what we want to do, then we should just talk about doing those things. But we shouldn't pretend that this process will answer those problems for us. And so I feel like that got, to me, a little bit too much into that territory.
Go ahead, Steve.
So then, if that's the case, then look at nine. It is filled with things that say, current timeline invites instability, longer bus rides, uh, so these are all based on the idea that someone's going to come in here and consolidate the elementaries.
Or the high school.
Or the high school, right. So if you're going to apply that standard and say, well, we can't say what our dreams are, well, nine shouldn't express what our fears are, then. Larger districts could require more administrators. Well, if you combine three school districts, yes, it's going to require more administrators, and you're going to have a pool of three sets of school district administrators to draw on to create that larger district, so. More administrators, maybe not, maybe fewer administrators in total. If you look across the three districts, uh, because of Mount A, Virgens, and Middlebury combined, we don't need three superintendents. So, may inherit other districts' debts. Current timeline invites instability, which may cause harm to our youngest learners. Large districts won't fix underutilized schools. These sound like the fears that you're saying we shouldn't be expressing in seven when we talk about the possibilities.
Mary Heather, and then Jamie.
Yeah, I guess, um, I would like us to focus again on how we're answering the questions that have been posed. And this is our opportunity to provide input. So if we don't provide input, we don't provide any of the good or, you know, the hopes and dreams or the fears. I, I too have reluctance about withholding the possibilities and opportunities because the fears are large. I think that it's, um, I think we should just honestly answer the questions. And, um, and there's a couple of ways we can go about it. I mean, we can add to seven and add opportunities, or adjust, you know, to make it not so specific to IB, but just say, you know, one opportunity of being in a larger district is that you have more kids, and that creates a, a little bit more of a scheduling ease at the secondary level. I mean, we can kind of change the language so it's a little more generic and not specific to our curriculum, so that we're not envisioning, like, the, just a bigger ACSD as we currently are. But I, but I do think, you know, there are opportunities, and if there are opportunities that we as a board would like to see for our students in our geographic area, this is our opportunity to state those and advocate for those. So I think we're getting a little bit bogged down in just the resistance to this, which I, I think we all feel. But I, I, I would be sad to see us just stumble too much on that and not be able to express what we want for our kids and the things that we're worried about for our kids in this process, so.
Suzanne?
I also think that we need to remember that what we're reading was given in good faith by a few of the board, so that, um, you know, it may, some comments may seem hurtful to those that provided input. The other thing is, is that some of the fears and hopes are the same as some other, other districts have. I mean, some districts struggle the same as we do with enrollment that's going down and, you know, trying to figure out what's best for a community and for their students, and, you know, closing a building, not closing a building, longer bus rides, et cetera. But by giving voice to that, it's also giving voice to others within the greater Vermont school community that are also voicing the same things, that, because they're also struggling with it. You know, I sat in a meeting, and I can't remember whose meeting it was, but they were talking about the fact that there's many boards in the state that are looking to the state to be the ones to make decisions that they are currently grappling with and have grappled with for years, but just haven't been able to get past the grappling point. So they're, maybe not quite willing to say it in public, but that's what they're thinking, is, you know, if the state comes in and says this, then, okay, so our grappling is over with, the state has told us we have to do this, and, you know, we can move on. But, um, I, I, I would, I just want us to remember that there was a small group that did answer these questions. They took the time and were able to come up with some answers. And so when we make comments about what's written here, we have to realize that we are talking about other board members' work. And so we should just keep that in mind.
Thank you, Susie. Ellen has her hand up. Ellen?
I, I hope this doesn't cause a wrinkle in anything. I read that, I was one of the people who did not submit anything to, to own up to that. And so I read this with something in my mind that I hope was the right way, or our, our right way to think about it, which is, am I comfortable putting my name on this as it's written? Right, which for me meant, do I agree, not with everything, but this felt like, uh, an honest representation of concerns and feelings that I have. And also, I presume, based on the work of the executive committee, others, right? So it's not representative of every single thing, I think, and I don't necessarily agree with everything in here. Which, but, but I, by the end of it, felt like, yes, I'm comfortable having my name on this. It's a consensus document, it's not my letter, it's a letter that's intended to be of many minds. I also feel like maybe if there's, if, if that wasn't true for me, I would have come to the meeting and said, I don't think I'm comfortable. If, if I had really significant edits, or I was like, I need to take all the, you know, to your point about erasure, Mary Heather, or something, I would have said, I hate to say this, but I think I can't sign this, and I'll submit my own. Or I'll, or I won't, and that, I'll own that piece of it. So I realize we, we want this to come from the full board, but I also feel like if anyone does not see themselves represented enough in this, not perfectly, but enough, then I would assume it's okay for them to say, maybe my name isn't on here, and I need to submit my own letter. And that feels like another honest way for our board to represent our feelings about this issue. But I do read this as a consensus document, which means for me, it's not a hundred percent, but I feel comfortable putting my name on it. And I am grateful to the people who submitted for this and to the people who put the work in to compiling it.
Yes.
Ellen, thank you, because that was, I believe, the way the executive board wanted people to read it was, this is a consent, you know, a collaboration of people's voices, and this is kind of after all those iterations of ChatGPT and everything else there. We felt this was the best, best way. And, um, so, yeah, the way you read it was the way we had hoped people would read it. Thank you.
Steve?
Um, I am one of the people that submitted stuff beforehand, different than Ellen, but I approached the document in the same way, and there's things in here I don't agree with. The transportation logistics in rural areas are complicated. I thought of Matt Corenti, and I was like, eh, Matt might say, like, they're complicated everywhere. I don't totally agree with that, but it's not a big deal to me, so I was going to let it be. But, yeah, that's, the way Ellen kind of summed it up, that's where I'm at as well. There, there definitely are things that I don't agree with. I mentioned the three that I thought were important, the staff one was really important to me. But, yeah, that's, her approach is my approach, so.
I wonder if you could just change the question. Number seven, you could say, what potential opportunities do you see as a member of a bigger district? And number nine, you could say, what potential risks or concerns? And maybe that softens it enough to make the door wider. You can make the question whatever you like.
The idea is that we vote on this, right?
Yes, we need a motion on that. Yeah. Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we move, um, I'm trying to find the first page, so that I get the title right. It's here somewhere. To submit the collaborative testimony to the Vermont legislative's work under Act 73, as we've discussed it and corrected, edited it tonight.
A second?
A second.
A second.
Discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
Obviously, there will need to be some changes made, so how do we want that to work out? Just through email?
I think we could send a copy out to everyone. And if anyone had any concerns, they should get back to me.
By a certain date?
Yeah. And it'll be a short date, though.
Yeah.
Like by Wednesday morning or something like that, so that we can do something with it. And that was why I was asking Mary Heather, kind of, okay, what is that worded as now? So that's what I anticipate is, there shouldn't really be any surprises from what we discuss. Any other discussion?
So, question of, I guess, process? If we vote on this, we are voting for an edited document that we will see later? Is that what I'm hearing?
We're voting on this document with the changes that we talked about and agreed to in this meeting, which is unlike other motions that we do. We do amendments. I would hate to have to wait until the next board meeting to vote on this, because our window of opportunity for providing input, you know, it's, the longer it is in the process, the less likely the input is going to make any kind of difference. Steve?
What I assume I'm voting on is for other board members to faithfully capture this conversation tonight to the best of their abilities, knowing that this is a consent document that is, I'm not gonna 100% agree with. And if by chance there's a big issue, then I'm gonna speak up about it, but that's what I understand to be voting on, and knowing that because it's done by a human being, it may be imperfect to some point, and that's going to be fine with me.
Would it make sense to just summarize kind of the input that we? Hopefully.
I can, yeah. Maybe we just go through it real quick. So in, for number six, we are deciding to say, under school facilities and enrollment issues, we've decided to say ACSD has several underutilized school buildings. And also that we are changing the second bullet point to say, let me just go back to Ellen's point, fluctuating student populations, and then add the word inconsistent multi-grade classrooms, so that otherwise, that would remain the same. In the next header, equity gaps and staffing shortages, the first bullet point will be changed so that we say something in the essence of, due to budgeting and enrollment, some schools lack full-time or are not provided with full-time, something so that it's, that the board decision-making is reflected in that. The other thing is, the third bullet point there, that we will say staff time is spent traveling between schools. I don't know how we want to address. So the, the other thing that I have on here is the, the stuff about governance. Oh, wait, sorry, I think I missed one. School enrollment.
No, I think you're right.
No, I think you're right.
I have notes on number six, under school enrollment makes. I have an incomplete.
Data unavailable due to small sample sizes.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, yes.
Okay, and then, under governance and structural tensions, we agreed to just say, let me just find myself in the document. Board representations based on census data and perceived by some as unfair and others by, that's fair. So I'm not sure how we as a group want to handle some of the suggestions that Steve provided, the ability to fully staff combined elementary schools, more stable combined, or elementary school class sizes, less need for multi-grade classrooms, and greater opportunity for capital concentration. I guess I would like some feedback from the rest of the board on whether or not those should be added. I can continue on, or we can pause there?
Just pause there.
Okay.
All right, Mary Heather, can you say again which, which are the three that you're, you're hoping for more feedback on?
Yeah, so each for number seven. Steve Orzek had suggested adding four additional bullet points, one being the ability to fully staff combined elementary schools, the second one being more stable elementary school class sizes, less need for multi-grade classrooms, and greater opportunity for capital concentration.
I, for what it's worth, if this is okay to say, I, I really appreciated Wendy's suggestion of adding what potential opportunities do you see in seven? And what, and what potential opportunities you see? Or what potential risks or concerns do you see in nine? And for me, that then makes it a lot easier to, you know, if those four feel so important to Steve, then, you know, that's fine, because I think it does broaden the the language a little bit, so it feels more like an umbrella.
Yeah. The others feel, that's, it's fine with me. Okay.
Steve? Cash?
No, I just thumbs up.
It was a thumbs up. Okay, thank you. Are you okay with that, Steve?
Yeah, that sounds fine to me.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're also, we're still on number seven, but I'm to Jess's question, wonderings about the language and whether or not we want to say increased access to CTE and full IB diploma program? Do we want to perhaps reword that just to say, make it less specific to our curriculum and say, or just erase that third.
We say the opposite under what risks or concerns do you have as a member of the bigger district? And we say risk of losing IB program.
Yeah, right.
So I guess.
Right.
Right, but like, if I was reading that, I would be like, I have no idea what ACSD board members, is it, is it good or is it bad to lose IB?
It's a potential. It's a, oh.
We could put potential in front of number seven, too.
We did.
Yeah.
We did. I thought we just put under six and nine. Oh.
No, seven and nine.
Oh, seven and nine, I'm sorry.
I guess, and I was just, just my personal, I, I was one of the people who wrote, wrote something about this in my responses, that having a larger secondary school population affords the ability to provide multiple sections for certain coursework that may be required for the full IB diploma. And so that a student who wants to participate in CTE and has a schedule conflict and that currently exists, doesn't have to make a choice, but could perhaps. And I know Barbie, you were talking about that earlier, so.
Right.
Maybe it just needs to be worded that.
And I don't, I don't think that's.
So make a point, and then underneath.
We could add, yeah, parentheses.
The risks or concerns, you could just put a period. And so one, you're excited, and then the other one is just like, oh, well.
I'll just say.
You could put a grumpy face.
I don't, like, I don't think that's untrue. I just want to, and that was my longer comment, like, that we're giving something that can have value to the dis, to the task force. Like, if it's a lot of opposing things, I don't, it's, it's valuable because it's how we feel and how individuals feel, but as far as to help inform a decision, if I hear that one thing is a, is a, is an opportunity and one thing is a negative, then I, as the one making a decision, I'm like, I don't, that's not of value because it just balances the scales. So that's where my comment about, like, I want to make sure that we remember, like, the purpose of this document and where it's going. But I don't have strong, like, I don't think it's wrong that it would be great to have more students for IB. But I just don't know, like, if that's helpful for the redistricting task force on either end, if that makes sense.
So in here. Okay.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, I was gonna do the same thing.
What if we just say increased access to flexible pathways or, or to a variety of coursework pathways, or what's the, what's the word? Help me out. You know, so that it's just more universal language that exists in lots of different districts, but.
Instead of signaling out IB.
Yeah.
And I was gonna say something similar, because it's like, well, we're above, we talk more course sections and diverse offerings, fewer scheduling conflicts, that all is leading to that third bullet, right, as well.
It's okay, I was gonna make a suggestion here, which is, I actually think this might be a place where more words are helpful, or more helpful than fewer. I don't know if I would recommend this, I'm, I'm happy to go with the will of the people here, but like, I think it's okay for us to call out IB if we put it into context. Because even just the way that you said it earlier, Mary Heather, and the way Jess, that you're also finding this, I think both of those have a place. So in seven, if it's, you know, as a district with IB, we see the potential, it was larger class sizes that would create more pathways to both CTE and the diploma program that would allow, you know, I mean, I think we could just add, concision is great, and this might be where it's working against us. And then I think in section nine, we could say, without necessarily contradicting ourselves, we are concerned that our district would lose IB if we are consolidating with a district that doesn't, where that no longer has a place. And in both cases, we're potentially underexploring the value of IB for us, but also from like a strengths position or a potential opportunity position, and then also from a concern. So I just, I, I think that maybe there's a way to say more and, and provide more context around what we mean. And maybe, Jess, that, that allows for the redistricting pass, they, they don't care about our little curriculum, but we care deeply about it. So I feel like if we want to give them that feedback, it's, it's okay to highlight that, but it, we have to explain why.
And maybe we just put CTE and IB diploma program in parentheses after a variety of flexible pathways, parentheses, CTE, diploma program.
I hate to throw a wrench into this, but currently, the district that they're talking about consolidating us into are the districts that feed into the CTE program, so. The kids at Mount Aven, Virgens already go to Annford, so I don't know how this would increase our access.
It would allow Virgen student to be a Middlebury student all day long, so that they could have access to their other things without actually driving back and forth.
I see.
So it would provide. Plus, there's the issue for kids that are in the IB diploma program not having the ability to fit in a CTE course that they want to take on their schedule. And so when I read that third bullet, that's what comes to mind. So are we good with doing some nuance here, based on the discussion that we just had? I'm good with letting Mary Heather just do some magic there, which she does. And I think that'll capture it. Thanks, everyone, for that discussion. You know, based on the input that we've received. Are you comfortable with that, Mary Heather?
I am, and that's, I'm caught up with, with what we've said so far.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, the other section was nine. I'm not sure, I don't recall really doing any changes there.
Except the ones they talked about. Potential risks.
Yeah, other than potential.
Yeah, I, I.
Yes.
If we're, where's this risk of losing IB? I think we should put in, it's an accredited program, so that people know that there's, I mean, the risk of losing that, we, our, our staff has done
so much.
yeoman's work to get the accreditation and to keep the accreditation. Then I think that I just, I would, I would like to see the word accredited program or and program accreditation or whatever in there, just to acknowledge the work that's into that.
And at the time, remember, I made the mistake of saying that they were both there. So now they are, so we can.
That's what we're told.
Yeah, so we can actually add the, in, bad as well, because my original comment had it in. Thank you. Any other discussion? Thank you, everyone, for bearing with this. So I'm, are we ready for the question? All those in favor of approving this document to go to the task force? And with the changes that we just walked through, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Yay! It took a while, but we got there. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
It was worth it.
Thank you. Okay, the next thing that's in here is the summary of the responses I got back. I put the original Vermont School Board recommendations, their memo in there, and then I gave a summary of the survey results that I received for responding. At this point, what I would plan to do is go really with the majority, which is pretty much to agree with the Vermont School Board recommendation.
That's fine. I mean, I abstained because I am part of the committee, so that I felt it was a little awkward to revote on something.
Understood, and I appreciate that. And so based on that input, that's.
Could I ask a process clarification question? So I saw that there were five responses out of the 13 of us. And that it seemed to be, if I'm reading this right, that if it was a, if it was a 5-0 vote that was passed as a regular resolution, that that was, that was how you were presenting it. So, I, I'm looking at this summary. And when I went through and looked at them, so all the 5-0s went, passed as a regular resolution. So that means that everybody agreed on that one. So we were gonna say to pass that one.
No, we are saying to go with the recommendation. What the survey asked was, do we go with the, a Vermont School Board Association recommendation? It's the recommendation.
Basically, these are all the recommendations.
So that's what I was asking, is do we go with the recommendations? And if one indicated no, then I gave you a place to explain what you would like to do.
So the take no position, that is the recommended action of the VSBA board?
Yes, yes.
I see.
Yes.
And so our vote, the 5-0s, the 4-1s, and the 3-2s, that's irrelevant?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really taking the work that that board did on our behalf, and then deciding what is our position based on that. I figure that was the easiest way to handle this.
It's not that it's irrelevant, but in all of them, we sided with the VSBA
Yeah.
recommendation. The 3-2, you know, it's closer, but all of them were majority agreeing.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, and I, I don't believe this requires a vote. It just is like a summary of, and thank you for your input. I appreciate that. So, next, oh my goodness, we are so behind. Next is the discussion and potential action, setting a feasibility goal for fiscal year '26, '27 budgeting.
If someone didn't present there?
I do, yeah. I didn't know if I wanted to walk it in.
Sure.
So last board meeting, I let you all know that you had homework to consider the finance presentation and the early view of budget drivers with all the things that will almost certainly. things that will almost certainly increase the need to spend money, not decrease the need to spend money. And think about what we wanted to do for a budgeting target to provide to the administration. Last year, we gave them the target of 2% increase. So that will turn over to Matt to talk about this.
Awesome. So I've got 50 slides to go through.
Hope you hear it till midnight, for sure.
It's only two or three. Because the goal is to push it back to all to have a discussion, right? So these are really meant to be sort of reference points. And then some, some estimates and some number crunching that we did to provide a little bit of context so that your discussion feels like it's informed by what we know now and aware of what we don't know yet. And so without further ado, we've got here on the first slide, four different numbers and then some explanation for each one of them. So starting on the left, we've got 8.2%. This is the new V2 calculation of the threshold capacity, how much our budget could go up before it hit the threshold. That change, it was, I think, 12, but the last time we looked at it, 11 or 12, comes from a new calculation of the how the NEAP was applied to the to the calculation. There was actually some confusion at the VSA VASBO conference by the AOE about exactly how the, how the law was meant to do this. And it's kind of funny watching everybody sort it out, but essentially the law last year was implemented with that year's inflationary figure, and then it's just updated every year. So rather than taking the average of this year's past budgets and rebasing around that, it uses the basis created last year and just adds another inflationary factor on top of it. That led to the new version of this number here. And as a reminder, any bond debt from school construction is required to be included in the threshold. So we'll look at that piece in one more level of detail on the next slide. Four to 6% is a very rough estimate of where things start to fall once we roll everything over programmatically and apply some of the drivers that we presented during the last time. Wage growth, contract growth, the inevitable tuition rates increasing, benefits increasing, and then, and then all the other little ones, so. Some of our major unknowns still. We have staff negotiations happening. We have tuition from UPK in the Career Center. Healthcare rates are due to be out soon, but we don't know them yet. And then, you know, anything programmatically that changes would have an impact on that, that driver side of things. We have inflation. So this is that New England NEAP inflation factor. It's sitting at 3, 3.3% right now. This is, you know, in our region, how much more everything costs this year than it did last year. Okay, so, you know, a good metric that gets around is if, if, if wage growth is outpaced by inflation, doesn't feel like a raise, right? Sounds like a pay cut. But 3.3 is sort of right in the range that the next 12-month forecasts have it to the best of their ability. These are, you know, not the most reliable things. We know that we're in not the most stable of economic times, but for what it's worth, people say that 3% to 4% is where they see it in 12 months. And the last one there, $117, is the average post-CLA FY '26 tax rate for all ACSD towns. This average, if you were keeping score at home, would be lower than what we presented during the spring because Cornwall, Ripton, and Waybridge were all reappraised, and that reappraisal brought the town tax rates down for those towns. Houses are worth more. You don't need as much of a tax rate to raise the same amount of money. Okay? So with that said, you could say education, homestead property tax rates are, on average, at the lowest rates since the district formation. Two more numbers. We've got 1.25%, which is the projected effect of each $10 million in school construction bond debt on ed spending. So we wanted to get a feel for how we could think about school construction bond debt and the affordability of projects as they emerge and are presented to the board over the course of the fall. As a benchmark, a very rough benchmark, 1 and 1/4% towards that threshold of, let me say 8%, is the effect of each $10 million. And we know from our 2018 numbers that, you know, $100 million would not be outside of the realm of possibility for things we could find to spend money on. So, you know, that's 12 and 1/2%, that would obviously consume the whole gap between where we are and the threshold. We use 4%, as an interest rate for our bond calculations, which is in line with where things are right now. And, oop, and again, that's towards the spending threshold. We also wanted to do a little bit of a calibration factor around the tax rate, and, you know, what does one cent of tax rate equal in terms of ed spending? And so this kind of crosswalks that by calculating for every quarter million dollars, $250,000 that, that the district spends, that creates one cent of property, homestead property tax rate. Or about 0.6 of our ed spending, so. It's just sort of a, a rough benchmark that, that should help turn big numbers into easier numbers to understand. And then this is some of that tax rate data that I was talking about. We charted it all the way back to 2016, or FY '16, sorry. And obviously, a few big things have happened since then. You know, we had the early years of district creation, then right into the pandemic. We know that during the pandemic, especially between 2019 and 2022, property tax rates or home values in Vermont started to go up dramatically. There was a peak in '22, and it's kind of plateaued since. But that increase in home values created, you know, more property wealth, and reappraisals have lagged behind that. We had the ESAR years, which sort of helped bring in additional revenue to school budgets and helped stabilize some of those big investments. As ESAR ran out, the investments were lagging behind on their expiration, and so we had in '25 kind of a spike in property taxes. However, '25 and '26 are reappraisal years, where six of our towns have been reappraised. And as I said earlier, houses are now on the books as being worth more, which means the towns don't need as much of a tax rate to raise the same amount of money. So you see six tax rates come down over the last two years. Middlebury is the one that hasn't been reappraised. That's the green, and it's still due. Any questions on that?
Just to maybe contextual points, even if you're not putting a bond together for this FY, you know, consideration, if you want to do that in another year, that, that's going to eat up a chunk of that year, you know? So whatever you spend in this year, it, it brings you potentially closer to that spending threshold, right? So if you, if it is of interest to you to, to have room to consider that, that's just something to think about, even if you're not going to do it in FY '27. It, it makes the, the Mountain View discussion about the importance of taking capital spending out of the spending threshold relevant to us and, and every district in the state. So, so that illustrates that, you know, for you. And, and I just wanted to make sure that you were able to, to tie those pieces in together.
That's all the info that we have tonight in order to help facilitate the discussion, but if there are questions, let me know. And, you know, again, the threshold is, in essence, a target that the budget development aims at. It's, you know, something that can be subject to change or evolution or amendment throughout the budget development process. But it really is a sort of north star that helps guide our planning towards your vision and your goals and ensure that the work and the subsequent presentations are well-aligned with, with what you're looking to see.
What I personally struggle with is, we had this great presentation this evening, and I see work to be done. You know, from where we are today and putting resources where we need to put them. And so I'm really nervous of not funding the district adequately to continue the work that we've started. So, you know, that, you know, when I started thinking about it this afternoon and looking through the slides, and it's just like, oh my gosh, you know, we're really just beginning this journey, when you think about it. You know, we set the, we established this strategic plan, and yes, you know, could we, you know, use something other than VT cap, whatever, in what we're looking at? That's definitely true. But I think where we had evidence in the presentation was, you know, when we looked at, you know, the literacy, having a concentrated effort, which took resources, it made a difference, right? And we need to see that same thing happen with the math. So I just definitely don't want to shortchange our budget when we're going into the following year. Jason and then Mary Heather.
So I just want to remind folks that this is a feasibility targets.
Yep.
And it's just a starting point for Matt and his team to craft a bu, a first draft of a budget.
Yeah.
The first draft of a budget, like, and I can say like, hey, we want to do all the stuff we want to do, your target's a little low. You know, or like, hey, your target was plenty. We can actually come in a little below your target and still do all the stuff we want to do. That is, you know, so we're not locked in when we set a feasibility target. It's just a line in the sand that we just don't want to have, you know, give them a huge surprise, where if we give them a target and be like, oh, actually, no, we were, we were thinking zero-based budgeting.
I don't want to give you a huge surprise either.
So I would like to make a motion, and if we can continue discussion, it's a motion. So I'd like to move that we set a feasibility target for FY '27 of 3%.
One second.
Discussion. Mary Heather.
Just kind of following with the point that you were mentioning, Barb, similarly, especially after the presentation and recognizing the need for strategic investments. And I'm just starting to think, I guess, at kind of a high level of what are going to be the best investments for us to make for our kids as we move toward this transition to redistricting? And what are going to be the best things for them? And I, I feel similarly to you, Barb. I mean, I, I want to be, I certainly want to be fiscally responsible. And I do think, to some degree, that, you know, there may need to be some tightening of the sails to make sure that we have what we need to invest in what we want to invest in. But I, I feel similarly to Barb about investing in those strategic, whatever, what's that block that, that?
Block seven.
Yeah, I think block seven is a priority for our FY '27 budget, so just want to put that up there.
Yeah.
Steve.
Steve?
Yeah, two things. 3%, if I am doing the calculations right, is approximately $1.5 million increase in our budget. And to your thing about threshold capacity, long-term weighted average daily membership, Claire or Ralph, they never did change it. It's always been that long. Are we anticipating that being stable or going down? Because it has been going down almost every year. And does that change?
The LTW ADM?
Yes.
Also due from the state this week.
Okay.
My back of the napkin says it might tick up a percentage, largely based on the shift of our demographic towards secondary, where they gain more weight. So I think I can conservatively forecast a tick up of 1%.
Which is good.
Yes, yes.
More weight.
Yes.
More money.
In other words. Other discussion? Yes?
I just have a question, because this is my first time on the board, learning all this. So if the estimated budget drivers are between 4 and 6, the inflation's around 3%, potentially more, it says 3 to 4% on the bottom, then wouldn't the 3% target, like, I mean, that you're, right, the inflation is eating up that 3%, so we're not actually like adding capacity for programmatic growth?
That's likely true.
Without cutting something, right?
Right.
Yeah, so I guess in that regard, I mean, it's just a target, but I would be in favor of a higher target personally.
Would you like to amend the motion on the?
Maybe not yet. I'll just throw it out there for discussion.
Jamie?
Well, I guess I wanted to ask Jason, maybe if you could add more sentences to your motion, like 3%, like, give us, give me a rationale, or like, I guess I was feeling a little bit like you, but, and I remember I was feeling the same thing the last couple of years too, but like, what does this mean to you is, why did you put 3%?
One is, last year we were at 2%, and we didn't have to make, like, huge staffing cuts and to make a 2% target, right? We're still able to make strategic investments in math intervention, which is great. I don't think that everything is going to be impacted by 3% inflation, and I think we'll, we have to shift some stuff around a little bit, and maybe, maybe some things go up, some things go down. I think it's a good starting point. And if Matt, and if they come back, if the administration comes back and says, you know what? We really need 4% to do what we have to do, then we have that special.
Okay, thank you.
Others?
I also think that the increase in healthcare isn't going to be as high as it has been in previous years. And part of that is because of the way they, is the healthcare pool, they took a, a group of individuals out of the pool and switched them somewhere else, so that the increase in cost is staying reasonable. But, you know, it, it, it's a place to start and to see where we go. Yeah, because getting too close to that threshold gets really nerve-wracking, because if somebody gets their numbers wrong, and you find yourself over it, it's a double taxation on every piece over it, so. I, I like the idea of just starting somewhere.
Ellen, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I think I feel the way Jess, if I heard you right, does, which is, and also I hear you, Jason, I think, I think that's good reasoning, so I, I'm inclined to support the 3%, but I just want to throw out there to, you know, to all the staff and Matt, you in particular, but everyone in the room, and, and all the people you'll be working with across the schools, to build a budget based on whatever target we set, to please not feel like, I don't think you will, but just to have another voice in your head, to not hold back, really transparently and clearly communicating to us the programmatic impacts of the budget. Because I know that last year there were some positions that were consolidated or cut, and, and they weren't, I think, huge blows to the body, but they, but they did exist. And so the more that we have full understanding of what we as a board are deciding, or we're setting as a goal, really means for student, student and staff, students and staff across the district, I would just really want to hear that very, very clearly, and I think it's been coming on us to keep asking those questions. So just to throw that out there, 3% feels too tight. I definitely want to know. Or where it, where it's too tight, being really clear on that.
Others? Steve?
Laura, I may have had your hand up before I.
Did you have yours?
I thought you had, that Ellen had her hand up.
Okay.
I'd say in a similar situation to Jess, it'd just be my first go-around with this, but. but I'm suspecting by FY '27, we may only be operating six elementary schools in this district. Just a thought that I have. And so I'm wondering, I don't get the sense that this is exactly an easy budgeting season going forward, and so I'm just wondering, kind of, if we are closing schools or the potential exists, where do we get that benefit? Or is it just that, is that just kind of the reality of the budgeting that we are in? Is that to stay level, we may need to work through more of those closures? And so I'm just trying to kind of balance, because if we don't get much credit for not operating a school, that's challenging going forward. Because I don't, I don't see that us not operating one school is going to make this super easy. And I think we all should just sit with that possibility in reality, knowing that that all may not come true.
Others? Anyone else? We have a motion on the floor. Are we ready for the question or other discussion? Okay, saying none. So all those in favor, the motion is that we set the feasibility target at 3%. So all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? And Ellen, I didn't, did you say aye?
I did, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the motion passed, so we'll be instructing the budget to be constructed based on a 3% feasibility. You know, I'm nervous, but one thing I feel better about is the fact that now we have this building back approach, and I think it's going to be obvious, more so than in the past, of what that really means and what the impacts of it is. So I'm hopeful that now that we have this equity-based budget that we implemented last year, that we'll be able to work through what the implications of it are and make a decision, you know, if we need to, to adjust things down the road. It's also our intent in this budgeting process to, you know, you have some decisions to make, you know, as prior to your first draft budget that will be coming out right now, scheduled to be December 8th. And as you make those decisions, when we present budget materials to you, we will present to you additions or reductions that may relate to those in a menu of choices that I think is a little bit different from what you might have experienced in the past. Because to Steve Cash's point earlier, you know, it isn't up to us to determine whether you want a full-time nurse in every building, right? Some of those things are things that we want to start a practice of bringing to you, first to the Finance Committee and then to the Board, to be able to engage with in that way. So it'll be a little, you know, we'll take our block model, because we all know that, and that works, and then we'll work to make it interactive, you know, as we are presenting things to you, you know, based on some of the directions that you've given us from a policy and great configuration as we continue throughout the fall. But this helps us begin to get to work with some of the basics, and so appreciate that and also just appreciate that it's your, you are, you're oozing supportive kids, and that makes you just good leaders of our district, so thank you for that. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, man. Okay, next is Policy Committee Update and Actions. First up is just an update on the Community Engagement and Vision Policy, A23.
We have a policy draft in the committee that I think we decided not to bring before us this meeting because of this lovely slate of policies that we have to adopt. It will be coming for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Laura wrote it, Laura drafted it, we all edited it, we like it, so we'll bring it to the next time that it makes sense.
Okay, okay, thank you for that.
And then the other ones, as Laura mentioned, there's still these ones that did not get adopted last time because they were left off the agenda by mistake, and so here they are. You saw these a while ago, but they're unchanged, and we're hoping that we can take action on them, adopt them tonight. Can I make a motion? Of course, I don't have them in front of me. So I make a motion that we adopt the policies listed in the, in the morning for this evening. Do I have to list them all?
No. Last time Suzanne.
I read them, if you'd like, Jamie, I can read them.
Sure, read them right now. I can't, I'm like, there's 20 pages here.
It's A7, I'll tell you everything. A7, governing staff, B1, substitute teachers, B2, volunteers and work-study students, B7, tobacco prohibition, B20, personnel recruitment, selection, appointment, and background checks, C2, student alcohol and drugs, C4, English learners, C6, participation in home studies students, C8, people privacy rights, C13, students who are homeless, C25, policy on admission of non-resident tuition students file, F1, travel reimbursement, F2, policy on non-discriminatory mascots and school branding, F20, fiscal management and general financial accountability, and F26, security cameras, sorry.
Okay, I have a motion. Can I have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, ready for the question? Okay, all those in favor of approving the policies that were warned on September 8th that are listed in the warning that Suzanne just read, please indicate by saying aye. Any objections? Any abstentions? Okay, the policies have been adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have one more, I have one more question about this? So all these have to get put on our website?
Yep.
And switch out for the ones that they're replacing or whatnot. Should I, what is the, what is the, should I just send them to Darcy?
Yes.
Great. Wasn't sure if I should do that, or one of you should do that, I'll do that. Okay.
Is there any policy, do we need to put the date in, today's date? Yeah. Yeah, so you need to modify it or have her, give her the documents so she can put the date in from when we adopted them?
Correct. We'll do.
Okay, thank you.
There's also the date warned.
And the date warned, which is why I put it in here as well.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Next is Board Reflections. Anyone care to express any? Yes, Jason?
I'm very thankful for the discussion and the 13-person wordsmithing that we did. I lose my optimism.
Good, thank you. It was good, thank you. Any others? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Excellent, thank you.